Thank you all so much for coming. This is a great turnout tonight. I'm Sarah McKenzie, I'm editor of the Journal. Thank you so much Adila Sal for letting us have the event here tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for moderating the event. And thank you to the candidates for participating tonight. Thanks to Diane Hofstadt and Jacob Fry. We are going to be videotaping the event tonight too, so be sure to check out our website, thejournalmpls.com, to see a recap of the forum and video footage. I'm going to turn it over now to Margaret Berg.
Good evening and welcome. From me to Margaret Berg, I'm in charge of the candidate forums for the League of Women Voters this year. And I'll be moderating tonight. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization founded in 1920, shortly before women were given the right to vote, to make sure that they had the knowledge to cast an informed vote. Today, the League's mission is to inform all voters and to encourage civic participation. The public trusts the League to provide information that is needed to take a position or vote on important public policy issues. And although the League endorses positions, it does not endorse political candidates or any political party. The League of Women Voters welcomes both men and women as members. And if you'd like to learn more about membership and volunteer opportunities, there are brochures out in the hall. This forum is being held before the party endorsement process begins. DFL caucuses will be held on April 16th. Republicans will use delegates from last year's precinct caucuses. The Green Party held an endorsing meeting on February 17th. And I don't have any information at this time about the Independence Party. It's important to know something about all the candidates because you will have an opportunity to rank your top three choices in the election on November 5th. And there will be no primary election in September to narrow the field, which at this point is moot in this ward. But in some of the other wards, the mayor or a staff will not be the case. We flipped a coin to see who will be going first. And that will determine the order for opening statements. I know there, we said that there would be no campaign literature handed out ahead of time, which kind of got away from us. And so some of the literature for Jacob's campaign was out probably before Diane's. But it's definitely available to everybody. And I hope you will pick some up at the end of the forum. Written questions will be taken. And I know that they're already being looked at. A lot of them have been submitted. If somebody wants to submit a question, Jennifer, where are you? There, right there. Candidates will have up to two minutes for opening statements and responses to each question. And I encourage candidates, if they don't want to take the full two minutes, we will get through more questions. So don't feel like you have to fill up the time. Carlin Franck down here in the front row. You want to hold up the cards that she'll pay for. She'll give you a one-minute warning, a 30-second warning, and then tell you when to stop. And you can certainly finish the sentence here in the middle of it. So I think we'll start then, at this point, with opening statements. And Diane won the first position.
The mechanics of all of this. Yes, I'm glad you're in your seats and not up here. You'll be thinking about that more as this goes on. I'm Diane Hofstadt, the Minneapolis City Council Board member for the 3rd Ward in the city of Minneapolis. And I've been your council member for the last eight years. During that time, we've done an incredible amount of work today, making our ward better, having it grow. And I have been your neighbor and your friend and a lifetime member of Northeast Minneapolis. I grew up in North Minneapolis, was a teacher in Northeast and Northeast High School. I was a teacher in North Minneapolis and your library board representative. I have to build the downtown Minneapolis Library and the Pierre Rodney Library and make improvements throughout our library system in the city of Minneapolis. Over the last eight years, my focus has been in three major areas: public safety, economic development, and housing. In the area of public safety, I've delivered eight years of steady reduction of crime statistics and increased partnerships both with the 2nd and the 4th Precinct. We have made public safety improvements in Southeast Minneapolis with the Southeast Strategic Strategy with the University of Minnesota and the new Dinketown Safety Strategy, which we are implementing this month. In addition to that, I've established the Northeast Riverfront Entertainment District Safety Strategy. That is a partnership began with 2nd Precinct, the Northeast Chamber, our business community, and our residents in order to make improvements in public safety throughout the Northeast area. Public safety has been my number-one priority. Without that, we would have not been able to have the rich economic vitality that we have experienced in the 3rd Ward. I've added over 1,000 new units of housing in the ward, including saving the historic A-mill. The A-mill will be 250 affordable artist housing. In addition to that, I partnered with the Sandy Falls Heritage Board in order to achieve the receipt of a $295,000 legacy grant in order to open up the historic tunnels for all of us to participate and see the history of our city. In addition to that, I have been a champion of the Mississippi Riverfront. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Time's gone a little bit away from us. Jacob, go ahead.
Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters, the Journal, and Councilmember Hofstadt. I think the public discourse is essential. My name is Jacob Frye, and I'm running for city council because it's a new Minneapolis, and our new ward deserves to thrive. And through innovative vision, through grassroots organization that includes everybody in the process, and through effective responsive leadership, we will make sure that our ward does just that. I, like so many of you, I fell in love with this city. I fell in love with the notion that I could walk to the farmer's market and that I could bridge the Mississippi River on my way to work. I fell in love with a civically-minded, engaged population fully capable of enacting change in the vision. I fell in love with a city with a ward that in many respects and through the right leadership can become very much like a big old neighborhood. Like a neighborhood that is built based on diversity. Not just diversity of people, but diversity of transportation options conducive to young and old alike. Diversity in terms of our employment, our entertainment options, our restaurants, you name it. Diversity in every sense of the word will make our ward a stronger, better place to live. I envision a ward that isn't divided by a river, but is connected by it. A ward that's an attractive option for families. And that means a school, a park, maybe even a children's museum. I envision a ward that is an attractive option for small and local businesses. And that means that we're giving them roadmaps to success as opposed to roadblocks to opening. And here's the big piece. Right now, it is crucial. It is a crucial time period because we have a slew of economic development that will inevitably come to our ward in the next 10 years. We need a city council member that's going to take a stance. We need a city council member that's going to lead. What's it going to say to some of the builders that come in? "Look, you want to put in your building? Well, great, but we need to make sure it's LEED-certified, environmentally friendly, that it's collecting rainwater, using solar, you name it." We can do all these things with an effective city council member, and I would be honored to be your choice.
Thank you. We will reverse the order for each question alternately. So the first question is, what have you done? And what will you do to help facilitate more affordable housing in the city?
Affordable housing is positively crucial to our city because, as I said, our city is based on diversity, right? We can't simply have wealthy homes with no affordable because then what happens is you've got everybody that's on the exact same schedule. You've got everybody that's coming to work at 8:30 a.m. and everybody that's leaving at 5:30 p.m. And when you have it, you have dead time. You have dead zones in the middle of the day and at the end of the day. I envision a ward that has all different kinds of people. And we can absolutely do that. And I've worked, I have already worked with Aon, I've already worked with several different affordable housing clinics, and I've gone into North Minneapolis on several different occasions to make sure that tornado victims were able to stay in their homes. I am presently working on a program which is called Mandatory Mediation for Foreclosure Victims. And by the way, Councilmember Hofstadt can get a chance to vote on this this year. I encourage you to vote for it. Mandatory Mediation for Foreclosure Victims allows people to stay in their homes and requires the banks to sit down, look at the individual in the home in the eye, and see if they can't possibly work out a solution. And what you find is not only does it enable people to stay in their homes, the banks actually make more money. Because you'll get the situation where it'll be a $200,000 mortgage. And then the bank will sit down, look the person in the eye, and the person will say, "Look, I'm in a bad place. My wife has cancer, I've lost my job. I won't be able to pay the mortgage for the next three months, but come December, I own a snowplow company, and I'll be able to pay double the mortgage for the next three months." This is a program that works, this is a program that helps people, and it's a program that I'll support.
Thank you. I'm very proud to support and have voted for Affordable Housing Trust Fund within the city of Minneapolis. That's a $9 million commitment by the city of Minneapolis and all of the council members to support affordable housing. In the year 2010, Jimmy Carter brought the Worldwide Habitat for Humanity to focus on affordable housing. That worldwide event happened in the Hawthorne Eagle Village in the 3rd Ward. We welcomed and built over 26 new affordable housing. Each and every year, I have added affordable housing to our city in strategies. The NSP, that's the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, has been a project that I initiated with Representative Keith Ellison and the federal government in order to improve affordable housing and availability of housing throughout the city. We identified areas within our city that had needs, and we strategically addressed those needs. We will add a new affordable housing in St. Anthony West. That's a collaborative effort with Project Pride for Living. I have a very strong relationship with Habitat and our other affordable housing advocates in our city. I will continue that commitment. That is part of my vision, to ensure that affordable housing is available to each and every person in our city.
Thank you. The next, let's be found for applause tonight, so we're not trying to kind of outdo each other. Diane will go in first. What do you think will be the biggest challenge for Ward 3 over the next 10 years?
Oh my, that's a really important question. I think we'll have many challenges. And what I hope that we will focus on is our challenge of maintaining our city as a publicly safe city. We are really, really lucky that we've had reduced crime rates in the ward, in our city. And it's really critical that we continue to address public safety needs. Without the public safety needs addressed, we will not be able to develop economically within the city. In addition to that, our challenge will be to develop our economic potential. I see the Riverfront as being part and parcel of that. And we have some very robust plans with the River First Initiative. But we need to look for funding in order to make that possible. Ongoing relationship with the state of Minnesota so that we ensure that we get local government aid is going to be critical. We have seen a reduction of local government aid to the city of Minneapolis. And as the economic engine of the city, we deserve to have additional dollars from the state. Additional collaboration with the federal government so that we can ensure that green housing and green initiatives become part and parcel of everything that we do. And in addition to that, we'll have opportunities to look at ways in which we can increase the green strategies within our city. How do we reduce the green emissions that are emitted? How do we pay for it in order to increase the number of biking and transportation options that we would like to see? How do we create the city to be a place that each and every one of us want to live in? That will be our challenge over the next decade. And how do we build our city welcoming a wide variety of constituents to move here, including businesses?
First off, I'd like to thank the work that Councilmember Hofstadt has done for both crime and safety. But the main issue that we will be focusing on in the next 10 years is quite simply increasing residential population. We used to be, I apologize, we used to be a population of approximately 600,000 in the city of Minneapolis. We are now a population of about 380,000. That 220,000 decline in population has contributed to economic issues. It's contributed to safety issues because we have fewer eyes on the street. And I think it's detracted from the overall vitality of our city. So a big piece is quite simply, we do need more people. Now let's look at the populations, the demographics that we do have and we don't have. Presently, if you look over at North Loop and in somewhat Northeast as well, you have a large population of young urban professionals, which is a great thing. You also have a population which has recently moved here, which is empty nesters. And they've largely moved into the Middle District as well as the East Bank. This is a population that is so forward-thinking that recognizes the vitality of what a city can be, also a great thing. But we're missing a very large demographic, probably a 30-year span in between there, that is predominantly families. We have a lot of incentive to retain families here in our ward. Parents of families, they're about twice as likely to be in the top 20% of income earners. So let's be honest, they're contributing more to the tax base lowering property taxes for the rest of us. They're about six times as likely to be actively involved and engaged in their neighborhood association, which is always a good thing. So let's figure out how we can retain them. I think one of the big pieces is we do need a school. We need a viable option for a school. A second piece is we need more green space, public amenities. Children's museum, as I mentioned previously, would be a great thing. We can do this. We can increase our residential population and make our city a vibrant place, but we need it effectively to do so.
Thank you. Jacob will be next to answer, what are the transportation needs, current and future of the ward?
The transportation needs are many. First off, I don't know if anybody's aware of this, but North Loop is presently becoming the convergence of all of the rail in the city and in many ways, the state as well. So we need to make sure that the economic development that takes place there is positive and works for the community. Secondly, we need to be a forward-thinking city. And what a forward-thinking city means is in some cases, it's adopting some things from the past. One of those things is rail cars. For the record, I have four streetcars. People say the advantages of the streetcars are, well, one, they're loaded to ground, so it's easy to roll on and off of them. It's a smooth ride, and it's also a wider aisle. All great things. But the main reason that I think we need streetcars is it makes our city dynamic. It makes it fun. It makes it cool. Don't you want to be able to say food to your friend who lives in another city? Hey, fly in, take the light rail down to the nickellet stop, jump on a streetcar, cross over the bridge, and all meet for dinner about 20 minutes later. That's what makes the city dynamic. That's what makes the city thrive. And we can absolutely do that.
In 2008, I held a Neighborhood Summit. It's something that I do every single day, excuse me, every single year. I'm the only council member that holds a Neighborhood Summit so that we can either celebrate or sit down and have a discussion about major issues in our ward and our city. In 2008, I invited all of our transportation partners to have that discussion with our community to look at the importance of having streets that are pedestrian-friendly. In addition to that, last year, I've worked with the Transportation Department, the Metropolitan School of Design, and our neighbors to examine the whole opportunity and options of Grand Lee Road. We've come up with some solutions, and we've made recommendations to our Department of Transportation in terms of how we can make that a more pedestrian, walkable, friendly area. I have worked with the city council members and, of course, the mayor on transit options. And that includes the Central Avenue Transit or Hennepin Avenue Transit that is under discussion. Clearly, the idea of having more advanced transit, whether that be bus rapid or a streetcar, is under discussion. I fully support that. I have established several work groups to deal with traffic and traffic, not only the speed of traffic along our different streets, the 2nd Street and 4th Street and University Avenue, and to look at options for transit and more pedestrian-friendly amenities along those streets. So I've been very actively engaged in the discussion. Of course, we have adopted the transportation plan, the 10-year plan in the city of Minneapolis. And I pushed to make sure that the transit options of Central and Hennepin Avenue were included as we made that a priority in our city.
Thank you. The next question, Diane Hofstadt will start. What will you do to help small, new businesses in the ward?
Well, I have done. If you look up and down the street, you'll see that there are many more businesses, and I welcome them. And one of the ways that I welcome them is by advertising them and making the fact that they're open available. We do that manually with our Neighborhood Fest. In addition to that, I work very closely with them. When a business opens, I try to help them go through the regulatory and methods that they need to go through to receive their license in the city of Minneapolis and support them after they've received their license. I started what's called the LINK, and that is a relationship with regulatory services and our safety personnel and our businesses, not only in the ward, initially started in the 3rd Ward in Dinketown, but we've expanded it citywide. So we can help work with our businesses once they do become businesses in the ward in our city that they can be broader and richer and operate effectively. So I'm a supporter of businesses. I think they're critical to the development of the ward. We've had an increase, if you look down, every one of our streets, you'll see they are full of vibrant businesses. And I even revoked some licenses of businesses that have delivered less than what we expect for the city of Minneapolis. I am clearly a supporter of small business and intend to make that as part of my ongoing vision over the next four years.
Thank you. Jacob?
Small and local businesses are absolutely the heart of our city and the heart of our ward. I don't say, "I live at 316 East Hennepin." You don't say, "You live at 1300 University." You say, "I live across the street from Service." Or "I live down the block from Mays." We need to make sure that our small and local businesses have the tools that they need. And I've talked to numerous small and local businesses over the last several months, and the truth is that they do want to change. Small, local, they have so many difficulties in opening right now. Let's just, let's see. If you're a restaurant owner, if you're looking to start a restaurant, what do you need? Possibly you want to expand the size of your ravioli. Maybe you need a bigger sign. Maybe you want some outdoor seating or play live music on the inside, have some dancing. Maybe you want a liquor license. Every single one of these pieces requires that you go to a different department, and then the different department grants a permit or a license. And every single time you do that, it's another couple months and another couple months. Inevitably, what's been happening is the small and local business owners that first wanted to start their restaurant, they lose the capital or the financing because it takes too long. And they are forced to either close or move to another city. That's a horrible thing. Wouldn't it be great if we streamlined the whole process? If we had everything in one department where you got a roadmap that shows a person how to succeed? Now, think about this. It's already as complicated as it is. What if you don't speak English? We need to be reaching out to the small and local business owners from the very beginning to make sure they have the tools to succeed.
Thank you. Jacob will go next. How would you describe your style of public leadership? And I realize that you haven't been in that position, Jacob, but maybe kind of how you would see it rolling out?
Public leadership, in my mind, is about more than just voting yes or no on a particular regulation, ordinance, or piece of legislation. Being a public servant is about being incessantly involved in the community. It's about organizing. And I have proved that my ability to organize again and again and again. When we were facing a hateful marriage amendment, I started the Big Gay Race. We mobilized over 7,000 people. We raised $300,000 in support of marriage equality in opposition to that hateful amendment. When people were losing their homes, we've got an organization that is pushing for mandatory mediation for foreclosure victims. When a tornado ransacked North Minneapolis, we did it again. We organized with man and woman power. We can continue to do that. And the city council member, more than any other position, I would say, has a direct contact with neighbors, residents, and constituents. And if you're not organizing on a regular basis, you are not effective.
Thank you. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about this because I have been a community organizer. That's how I started my role as a neighborhood representative. I also was on the Neighborhood Revitalization Board for over 20 years. So community organizing is part of the DNA that makes up who I am. I also chaired the Neighborhood Revitalization Board for two terms. So I'm not unfamiliar with that. And as part of my role as a 3rd Ward city council member, what I did is brought that community organizing initiative with me when I came to the ward. That's why we have the 3rd Ward Summit. That's why we have the 3rd Ward Neighborhood Fest. That's why every single month, I have care meetings where I invite all of you to join with me and the important people in our community who can make a difference. That means all of you. This is not something new for me. This is something that I have done my entire life. I have done it as a child. I stood at street corners passing up literature. And this is what we did. It's kind of what we did in the evenings on odd weekends. We supported community engagement activities in our church, in our community, in our neighborhood, for political people who are running for office. That's part of who I am. That's what I bring to this ward. That's who I am as an individual. That's who I am as a councilperson. I work collaboratively. I worked collaboratively with the University of Minnesota, starting the University of Minnesota Alliance. I worked collaboratively with the legislature instituting the Riverfront Partnership. I worked collaboratively on the 35W Bridge with not only our state representatives, but our federal representatives. We delivered a bridge that wasn't an off-the-shelf bridge. We delivered a bridge that was a stellar bridge that did not impact our sensitive riverfront, but was a change agent, not only for the state, but how we do business at the federal level.
Thank you. I think we'll turn a little bit more local here. I guess there are all kinds of local questions. But what does constituent services mean to you? And what would that look like if you were re-elected or elected? Diane, you are up.
Well, constituent service is something that you do every single day. And it is the outreach, not only the Neighborhood Fest that I have done every single year that I've been elected. It's also the newsletters, it's returning phone calls, it's returning emails, it's the outreach, it's going to community meetings. I have attended over 1,000 community meetings to listen to and work with you. It is bringing people into my office and going out to the community to have conversations. It's visiting businesses to find out how they feel about what is going on in their community and what additional kinds of help they need. And I found that part of the help that they need is around public safety. They need a partner who's there with them and for them that's listening to them. I go to the neighborhood meetings and the business meetings. I interface with them, and I welcome them to join us at the Neighborhood Fest. It is interactive, it is constant. It is not something that you do on occasion. It's something that you do every single day. You've been my friends and my neighbors. You've seen me at the grocery store. You've seen me teaching at... You've seen me teaching at your local high school. That's who I am. I'm not going to be running away from you. I never have. I've always been there.
Thank you. Jacob?
Constituent services, I would say, is twofold. First, as Councilmember Hofstad said, yes, it is about returning phone calls, and I pledge to do so every single time within 24 hours. It is about responding to emails, and I also pledge to do so with it 24 hours. But there's a second piece too, and that's this. City council issues, city issues, are by their very nature contentious. And when contentious issues arise, you need someone that's not only going to facilitate engagement and hold a meeting, you need someone that's going to facilitate a resolution. Someone that's going to be an advocate for the community and say to developers in some cases, "Look, you know what? You want to put your building up here? All right, but we need to make sure it's lead certified. We need to make sure that there's a public amenity out front because a public benefit in the end does add private value." But we also need an advocate to residents in some cases, because here's the truth. Here's the truth. In some cases, you're going to have some people that are annoyed with you, and you'd still nonetheless have to take a stance and be able to say, "Look, you may want this building. I don't think it's the best option for the community. You may want this building, or I don't think it's the best option for the community. Hopefully, you will see that we have the right idea another couple of years down the road." You need a City Council member that's going to take a stance on some of these things, and I will.
Thank you. New question. What, and this will be Jacob first. What is your vision for Block E? What needs to be done to make downtown safer and more family-friendly? And I don't know if the two necessarily need to go together. They could.
I think we can swing it. Well, first off, I've already touched on the family-friendly piece a little bit already, so I'll first target Block E, which I don't think anybody would argue with me is a total disaster. What happened several years ago is they said, "All right, you know what? We've got few seedy joints all around Block E. What we're going to do is we're going to mandate a bunch of sports bars." Anytime you mandate sports bars and there's not the market demand for it, chances are it's going to fail. So there's two problems wrong with this. One is you mandated sports bars, but two, you look at the square footage of every single one of these units, and it's gigantic. So inevitably, what happens is the only institutions that can move in are these giant conglomerate corporations and franchises that have no real connection to the city in which they're planting their roots, right? The strategy is to decrease the square footage in a lot of these businesses, a lot of these units, allow locally owned places to come in, and they've got some skin in the game. They've got something invested. And here's the truth. Occasionally, occasionally, you will have a seedy business that comes in. That's what a city is. That's what a city is. Now, we can try and promote diversity in terms of our businesses, just like we promote a diversity in terms of our transportation and culture, and we can do that. We can do that by decreasing the square footage of Block E.
Diane?
Hi. Well, my first solution for Block E was to put the Downtown Library there. I wanted to put the Downtown Library there and a large Central Park, but since that did not fly, I'm going to be putting and supporting the new Central Park as a front lawn for the Vikings Stadium. So I'm going to accomplish that goal. It's just taken me a little longer to do that. We have one of the most creative owners that owns Block E, and it's only a matter of time before, and I know he's working on a solution, something that he's not willing to come up with yet, but stay tuned. There's much more to come. And there's much more to come, and I'll tell you why. Because we just approved in the city of Minneapolis, the 2025 Plan for Downtown Minneapolis. That's a plan to incentivize and integrate and add more residents and housing in the downtown core. It's a plan to outreach to our riverfront and put a new park alongside our library, which by the way, I wanted to do when we built a new Central Library, but certain people didn't support that. I want to see that happen. In addition to that, we have a new Hennepin Avenue Arts Plan. That plan includes the developments of not only that Block E, but a lot more on Hennepin Avenue. That's why I'm looking forward to being the City Councilperson for the new Third Ward. I've been thinking about downtown for a very long time. It's part of my DNA. It's where I walk. It's where I go to. It's where I hang out, and I look forward to making it as exciting as the other side in the Third Ward has been. Look at what I've done. I have a record of success and accomplishments. I can hardly wait to get downtown Block E.
Thank you. I think we'll go to something a little more theoretical, and that is, Diane, you're first. What is your view of the Minneapolis City Charter and how our government is structured? Do you see need for changes?
Well, we've had over the years, very robust discussions about the city charter, and we're currently reviewing the city charter. Actually, we've been doing that over the last six years, probably longer than that. And I see one of our charter commission members in the audience, so maybe afterward, people might want to talk with him about what he thinks. City government is always evolving and changing, and we've evaluated how we can make our structure better. One of the changes that we've already made, that was alluded to earlier regarding problems that businesses have, is we've restructured regulatory services. We made regulatory services much easier to manage, not only from the standpoint of the City Council, but much easier for businesses to navigate through what was a complicated system. I continue to see that as our city evolves, we will continue to look at it from a creative standpoint, how do we make it better, stronger, and how do we engage all of the people in the decisions about running city government? I do not see it as being just something we take for granted, but it is important. The city charter is the constitution of the city of Minneapolis. We should not take the changes lightly. We should look at maybe the suggestion that we should not have an independent park board and what kind of impact that would have in our power system if we made that change and others that have been suggested over the years. So I see it as being fluid. Thank you.
Jacob?
So the question was potential revisions to the Minneapolis City Charter. As an attorney with a focus actually on constitutional law, I do understand how the law works and what we need to do in order to fix it. Now, I am a proponent overall of more power in the hands of municipalities. Municipalities are what impact people's day-to-day life. You walk outside, it impacts your walk to work. It impacts whether the trash is getting picked up or not, or the snow is getting plowed. And there's no Democrat or Republican way to plow snow, to pick up trash, or to keep a street clean. You just do it, and you do it well. Now, more power in the hands of municipalities means that we can tackle people's interests more directly. So major revisions to the Minneapolis City Charter will be difficult, and as Councilmember Hofstad said, should not be taken lightly, but we do need to be considering where power is best centralized. The second point is that there's a tremendous amount of duplication, of duplicative efforts that goes on, not just in the city of Minneapolis, but in Hennepin County and throughout the state. Let's look at the cross jurisdictions that we've got. We've got the city of Minneapolis. We've got Hennepin County. We've got the park board. We've got the Down Count Council. We've got the Met Council. All these five different groups. And granted, they do have pieces that they do separately, but they also have pieces that they do together. What I will do is make sure to collaborate with every single one of those groups to make sure that the resolutions that we get are the most effective and benefit the community the most.
All right. Thank you. Here's kind of an interesting one. A successful community is one that has high engagement among its members. There is a growing Gen Y and Gen X population in the Third Ward. How do you best engage them? And you might want to discuss diversity in Ward Three. Jacob?
Well, I'm not actually sure which generation I'm part of. I think I'm right on the borderline there, but the answer is not just outreach. The answer is not just holding meetings. The answer is affirmatively going out and talking to people and saying, "Hey, this matters to me, and this could matter to you as well." And if you look at the way we've structured our campaign, right now, with our campaign, we are including hundreds of people that aren't traditionally involved in the process. We've got empty nesters. We've got yuppies from North Loop. We've got artists from Northeast. We've got students at the university. You name it. And when you include everybody in the process, regardless of what generation you are, whether you've lived here for 50 years or 50 days, that is an effective ward. That is an effective city, and it's an effective campaign. And as we've set up, neighborhood captains, precinct captains, block captains, building captains, and even hall captains, yes, we are inclusive. And if you look around the room, and if you meet our supporters, you see there is a tremendous diversity, and that's what we're aiming to continue to push.
Thank you. Diane?
Thank you. I think including everyone in the opportunities and challenges in the city of Minneapolis are really critical. And some of the areas that I've really dealt are along the University of Minnesota Alliance. We have started a move-in, move-out day work group, and that's to engage the broad community, especially the students, and the discussion about how we can make that initiative. And for some of you who kind of look, what is that? Well, that, when students move in, they also, others need to move out at the same time, and it can be a very reactive time for the community and the students. So we're engaging in that work group. We're including Hennepin County in that, the University of Minnesota, and we're looking at ways in which we can make that initiative better. When I went to the legislature and worked on establishing the University of Minnesota Alliance, we also had a strong inclusion of how do we engage students in that whole initiative? And so every single year during spring break and fall, we engage the students, and we've expanded the whole idea of student liaisons throughout the neighborhoods and throughout the ward. They've been participants in our Sausage strategic planning and also participants in making decisions about how they can be more effective and efficient and involved in our community. Last night, we had a meeting at Deke Town, Varsity Theater, to talk about the new Deke Town plan, and the room was full, over 100 people, most of them students who want to be engaged in that initiative. Those are initiatives that I can and have been a part of. Those are initiatives that I see are really critical. It isn't just about, it's about all of us being included in the decision. And I've worked with Ignacio San Martin, Metropolitan School of Design, and his students to engage them in the future of the riverfront.
Thank you. New question. What are you doing or what will you do to moderate and control the apartment building bubble in the Marcy Homes neighborhood? And Diane, you're first.
Well, thank you. That's a really good question. One of the reasons that we have such a robust building initiative in the Marcy Homes neighborhood is because the neighborhood itself really wanted to see additional housing. And it's probably where we've had a lot of substandard housing in the neighborhood. So in many ways, we've embraced the new housing because it's safer, it's greener, it gives people opportunity to live in housing that is much better than what it has replaced. And if we had a pistol wall, we would have said, "Well, yeah, we should have done some advanced planning." That's part of what I've included in my goal with the Vikings Stadium Implementation Committee. And there is broad planning, and that is one of the areas that is really critically important to me. As we look at the development of the new Marcy Homes plan, we will be including all of that in our analysis. That is really critical. How do we plan and how do we collaborate with all of our partners? When buildings are available or people decide to purchase property, they have the right to do that. And we have had that rich environment of additional building because there are opportunities there, and the developers have recognized it. There are opportunities there because it's a safe neighborhood, it's a robust neighborhood, it's a neighborhood in which people want to live, and so that's why they're being attracted to it. And we do actively, I actively, work with the developers, working with them on their plans in the Marcy Homes neighborhood so that we can deliver the very best product that we can, products that define sustainability, that include art, that include green space, that include building materials that we can be proud of in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Jacob?
There is substantial development that is going on right now throughout Deke Town, and I think it's first important to check out what the historical context is. Several years ago, the University of Minnesota found out that students that were living on campus were graduating at significantly higher rates and were getting better grades. So what they did is they began encouraging, not quite mandating, but encouraging students to live on campus that first year. And what they found is if they lived on campus the first year, got good grades, stayed in school, they were much more likely to settle and move right next to campus, so in other words, Deke Town, in the following years. Now, what that has contributed to is a major influx in the student population, especially to Deke Town. With a major influx in population comes a shortage in some cases of residences, and what that has led to is development. Development in terms of density. Now, overall, overall, I am a proponent of density. It is a good thing, but when that density comes in, we need a City Council member that's going to make sure that it's done effectively, that makes sure that it fits with the overarching community and doesn't ruin the fabric of what's going on on those several blocks. I don't think that density and keeping the fabric of our community are mutually exclusive things. We can do, we can do both of them. We absolutely can. And you need someone who's been collaborating with the university, and I have. You need someone who's been collaborating with the students, and I have, and I will continue to do so.
Thank you. I think what we'll do is two more questions, and in the second question, it's going to be kind of a more general one, so if you want to make any more, any kind of wrap-up comments in that, you can do that. But before we do that, Jacob, please speak to us about urban farming and your strategy for getting farmers' products to market.
Urban ag could be a huge benefit to our city, and there is so much potential. The value of recognizing where the sources of your food come from, the value of eating locally grown fruits and vegetables is essential. And here's a big thing. Here's a big thing that I think we haven't touched on yet tonight. There are very much, in very many ways, there's two Minniamalists. There's one Minneapolis that's doing quite well, that has locally grown fruits and vegetables in the fridge. They've probably got organic countertops too, and they're doing well. Now, you've got another Minneapolis that is very much so struggling, that don't have access to farmer's markets, to locally grown fruits and vegetables. And what that contributes to, what that contributes to is issues with health, right? Issues with health, and I'm an employment attorney by the way, so I see this every day. If you've got an issue with health, maybe you'll miss two, maybe three days of work. When you miss two or three days of work, sometimes you get fired. When you get fired, you don't, you can't make the mortgage payments, and next thing you know, you're going homeless. It all comes back to the root, which is health. Now, we can promote urban ag in our area. Look around. Look around Northeast right over here, even where I live. You have very sound structures with flat roofs. Here's another piece, surface parking lots. We've got a ton of surface parking lots, both on those flat roofs and in-surface parking lots that aren't presently being used. Boom, urban ag, right there. We can do that, but we need one organization, and we need to lift some of the regulations that restrict that from taking place in the first place.
Thank you. Diane, you're up.
Well, I'm kind of a Minneapolis homegrown product, and the reason I say that is because I'm not only born and raised in the city of Minneapolis, but that's what we used to do. We used to till soil and having a garden in the backyard was always what we did, and I still do that in the city of Minneapolis. Minneapolis Homegrown is exactly the initiative that we're talking about. It is an initiative that I have established and was part of, and is part of the city of Minneapolis initiative to increase home gardening within our city. It is really critical to developing gardens in our city, but also in establishing the bee hives. I initiated that, and the City Council was the author of establishing bees to be locally in the city of Minneapolis. In addition to that, having fresh produce to our city is critical and has been initiative that I've supported. It is part of our Health Department initiatives for homegrown Minneapolis. It is what we're doing. It is part of the DNA of It is part of the DNA of who we are as the city of Minneapolis. On Longdale in 36, you'll probably notice that there is a new food market. And there's a new food market there because the other one was torn down. So we are bringing affordable and fresh foods throughout our city. That is something that I've initiated at the city council. It's something that I practice as a person. It's something that I believe in. And that is what we are doing in the city of Minneapolis. This is not anything new. This is something that we are doing. And the reason we're doing it is because each and every one of us in the city of Minneapolis deserve to have fresh food. And we are bringing it through farmer's market. I support the Northeast Farmer's Market. I regularly buy my produce there.
Thank you. The last question is, Diane, you can go first. Name three accomplishments or achievements of which you're most proud.
In case you didn't hear, it is, name three achievements or accomplishments I am most proud of. Hmm, so many. I think I'm most proud of the fact that we have reduced crime statistics over the last eight years that I've been in office. I intend to continue that. That is an initiative I feel strongly about. It is critical to the support of the city of Minneapolis, economic opportunity. And of course, I've been the champion of the riverfront of the city of Minneapolis. I walked regularly over the Lorry Avenue Bridge with my grandmother, who, by the way, wouldn't let me hold their hand when I was afraid of them rushing roaring waters. So I was brought up by very strong women who let me see that it was important to have a vision of the city of Minneapolis. And my vision, and what I've been very strong and very proud of, is initiatives along the riverfront. Riverfront first was established, we took an industrial site that I've had my eyes on for over 30 years. We made it an eight-acre park, a park for Northeast Minneapolis. We are going to expand that park land into North and Northeast Minneapolis. We are going to create a riverfront that is unlike any place in the world. And we're going to do it together. We're going to create jobs and access and more bike lanes along our riverfront and an economic community that is going to bar none. And the new Downtown Library. It's a green library. It had the first green roofs in the city of Minneapolis. It's sustainable. It uses green water, gray water runoff. And it has a children's room that is bar none. It is a place to be. It is our community location. It is a place that recognizes and engages everyone. And it's an architectural stellar building. That's what I'm most proud of. I'm proud of making changes in the city of Minneapolis that have made your city better.
Thank you. Jacob?
Three things that I'm most proud of. First, I used to be a professional distance runner. And for the first 24 years of my life, 26 years of my life, my focus was to get me a USA jersey. And I'm very proud to say that I did run for the United States. I represented the USA at the Pan American Games, finishing fourth place and just missing a medal. I'm very proud of that jersey. Secondly, I organized the Big Gay Race. This is something that is exceedingly important to me. Growing up with parents that were both professional modern ballet dancers, I recognize the value of the arts, but I was also surrounded by the GLBT population, very much so. And I saw loving, committed relationships from day one. And I thought to myself, you know what? If I don't stand up and do something about this, who am I? And I did do something. I organized in my living room. And that organization led to $300,000 and 7,000 people coming out. And we beat that amendment. And if you check out what's going on over the legislature right now, we're continuing to be. Third, I was recently, this last year, awarded the Martin Luther King Jr. Award by the city of Minneapolis. It was the very first one. I'm exceedingly proud of it. And it was not only for my work with the GLBT population. It was also for my work in North Minneapolis, working with tornado victims and foreclosure victims. It was for a group that I helped start called ISARU. ISARU, by the way, means empowered women. Women. And what we started ISARU for initially was because there's a gigantic stigma that's attached to women in the Somali community initially that are infertile, that can't get pregnant. Now, it has since stemmed into this amazing flourishing organization that is targeted not just in fertility, but health and empowerment. And you should see the women that are coming out of this group. It's, it'll seriously break tears in your eyes. You know, we have the opportunity right now to move forward, to take a big leap forward, to move beyond the politics as usual and the city planning as usual and the way things used to be. We can do that. We need a forward-thinking city council member to get us there.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. This will conclude our forum. And thanks both of you very much for participating. I hope that you, everybody will stay tuned as we move throughout the election year. Finals actually don't open until July 30th, so there may well be other candidates. Who knows? I do want to tell you that there will be a mayor's forum on Wednesday evening, April 3rd, from 6:30 until 8:00 at Salamis Porch, which is on 46th Street, one block west of Nicollet. I think it's in a church, if I'm not mistaken. So you might want to come to that. There will now be time to, you can both stick around for a little while, can't you, and answer any questions? And don't forget, there's literature outside about believing women voters and families. So thank you again.